Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived. We will call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Village President Clapfelter.
Yes. That's seven members of the village board answering the roll. That establishes a quorum and allows us to proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. So for the record, I'm going to read in the date, time, and place. Today's date is Tuesday, April 20th of 2021. The location is the Sherman Village Hall, 401 St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Trustees. Moving along on our agenda, the agenda's been posted 48 hours in advance of this meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, brings us to item number two, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance. So what I'm going to do and have the honor of doing, I want to ask, we blows one, Den Pack 330, if you all could stand up, we will all stand up. Could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And we will start after you. So, we're ready when you are.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we need to set the agenda. So, that being said, are there any discussion items that any trustees would like forwarded to the chair to be added to the agenda for discussion purposes only? Okay, seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by trustee Hahn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is set. We'll move to the clerk's report. Clerk Bold, item number one is the presentation of the March 16th, 2021 regular board meeting minutes. Those are presented by Clerk Bold for approval. Are there any trustees that have additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Okay, seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to pass the March 16th, 2021 minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by trustee Tim. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Then it's six members voting yes, none voting no. The minutes are approved and will be added to the village website for anybody to review. The next item listed is item number two, and that's the presentation of the bills for approval. The bills are presented by the administrator, the treasurer, the clerk. Been forwarded along to all of the trustees. Are there any trustees that have any questions regarding the bills for payment? These are the bills that come in basically each month so that we can run the village, whether it be a police department expenditure, or a public works expenditure, or anything in the administration. So, we need to approve the bills. Any trustees wishing to get further clarification of the bills? Trustee Rockford?
On the splash pad, I saw that we paid him something. At what will we have with that?
Uh, we'll get them on, we'll get the administrators and the engineer people. But that was for the engineering fees up to date for the design of the splash pad, which is now headed for the Illinois Department of Public Health.
Okay, any other questions? So the chair would entertain a motion to pay the bills. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz makes a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Rockford. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The bills are approved for payment. That's going to bring us to the treasurer's report that's listed on the agenda. At this meeting, we do not have a treasurer's report. For the record, we'll let you know that the fiscal year 20 audit should be presented in May to the village board. The tentative fiscal year 2022 budget will be presented and adopted and passed in June or July. That's going to bring us to the village engineers' reports. Engineer Kuhn is in attendance. So under engineering, we've got a few items that I and the board had asked for an update on. And I think the youngsters in here might want to hear this update. So the first thing that we were wanting to know is what is the current status of the Williamsville to Sherman bike trail? So I'll give you a quick little synopsis of what that is and how that came about. And then the engineer's going to let us know the status of it. So real quick, the village of Sherman was, and the village of Williamsville, Mayor Oakley and his board, myself and our board, was successful in obtaining a $2 million, up to $2 million grant to provide a bike trail that links Sherman and Williamsville. So, we've been working on that diligently. It took a very long time for this project to actually get started. Last fall, was it? Last summer, we did a groundbreaking ceremony. So they got started on it, the contractors got started on it. And then, you know, winter came along. There's been some, what if a pause or a break, but still things are taking place. We're going to hear that in just a second. But we continue to move forward on a bike trail that links the two towns. So someday, you will be able to safely ride your bike to and from the high school potentially. But I'll turn it over to the engineer at this point. Tell us where we're at in the construction phase.
Thank you, President Clapfelter. To date, the small drainage structures have been completed. That would be anything considered like a bike. Uh, they're working on the four-by-six culvert, uh, box culvert, four-foot-by-six-foot box culvert. That's supposed to be finished in the next two days. And then they'll move on to the eight-by-ten box culvert. Uh, they're on track. They're still looking at October to be finished.
Any questions? So say that date again.
October.
October, we're hoping this thing.
Sure.
October of 2021. See how they leave that open ended? I'm tired here, you know, I didn't tell you what year.
You're right to say, I did not say what year.
Okay, anything else under engineering? How about an update on the Old Tipton School Road path project?
That is done and has been submitted to IDOT for their final review and approval. We're going to get that.
So what's that?
And also the head of that. Now, that was the funding for that one is provided through Representative Tim Butler. Through efforts that you made in coordinating an amount of money, about $400,000 worth, to go towards that path. And that'll double away and get it accomplished. We are waiting for that kind of final designs. We are waiting for the information from the DCO, as it is an opportunity. And so it'll take probably the next 30 days before they'll come up with the funding mechanism for that.
How about showing hands? How many guys, how many of you guys have been to the new playground at the new park? Everybody? Who's walked around the entire property on the path? The 10-feet-wide cement bike path and running and jogging path? Most of you? Does anybody live in Old Tipton Estates? None of you?
One.
One?
No, we're old.
So what this is, is we were successful in getting a, getting member initiative money from Representative Tim Butler. He's our state representative. When the state of Illinois passed a, it's called the Capitol Bill, the Capitol Plan, which was a huge infrastructure bill to fix roads, bridges, buildings, various different things within the state of Illinois. And then there was different amounts of money that were allotted to certain areas. And usually those dollars go through the state senator or the state representative, and they work with the local village boards and mayors and village presidents. And so working with our state representative, which is Representative Tim Butler, we were successful, he was successful, and he put the village of Sherman in for an amount of $400,000, which we are going to use for a bike, an extension of that path that goes around the entire playground and park area. Well, it's going to run along Old Tipton School Road all the way up to the entrance to your subdivision by Old Tipton Estates, so that all of the residents within Old Tipton Estates can safely get to and from the park, staying off of the road and on a 10-feet-wide sidewalk that's in that grass just behind the fence line that runs there. So you'll safely be able to ride your bike, you'll safely be able to walk or jog or run. Steven?
How long is 10 feet?
How wide is 10 feet? Um, what would, engineer, how wide is 10 feet? Engineer? So it's going to be that wide, just like as wide as the path is that goes around the entire park, that running and biking path. That's going to be the pathway that takes you to and from Old Tipton Estates down to the park. But even better than that, the amount of money that we are receiving will actually get us, we think that gets us all the way down to St. John's Drive. St. John's Drive is this road right out here that you probably turned on to come into the village hall, right in between village hall and the clinic. So people from Flagland will also be able to make one, you can walk, ride your bike within Flagland, and there, then they'll, all this area over here, down this road, just cross over that road. We've got new stop signs up there right now, right? On Old Tipton School Road, we put those in, so you'll have a safer way to cross over that. The cars have to stop, and then you cross over right there, and you'll be right on that pathway. But the bigger part of this plan is to take that path all the way down Old Tipton School Road to where the water tower is, so that individuals in the Flagland subdivision area here can also come out on any of those other arterial streets that meet up with Old Tipton School Road. So you can go out down there. And the bigger plan, the bigger plan is to then go down Andrew Road. Everybody know, do you all know where the fire station is and the police station is and the post office? So that's Andrew Road. So we invite in the future to have the path go all the way down that and meet up with the Sherman to Williamsville Bike Trail, which comes to a head at Andrew Road across the overpass where our 55 is. So we want to link Sherman and Williamsville together in a, with a series of paths that you can get out and exercise on, um, ride your bikes, jog, do whatever you want to do, but link the two towns. And then the bigger concept is, is to link us all the way to Lincoln and to Springfield. That's down the road. And you know who's going to be working on that? All of you when you sit in these seats. So, uh, anybody have any questions regarding the paths and what we're trying to do with that?
Let me throw in there that Mr. Stratton and I have started a conversation with IDOT to get traffic signaled, pedestrian crossing on Business 55.
Did everybody hear that too?
We know that's a concern, so we started that to signal.
Yep, excellent. Anybody, any board members, questions, thoughts, discussion, scouts, anything? Okay, so we'll move on to engineering. Uh, anything, anything else to report?
Not tonight.
Okay. Legal report. So since you guys are here, I just, I like, I like to do this and let you know kind of what's going on in town. But this is a learning experience, um, and to let you know how the local government works. You may see the president and, you know, members of Congress on TV all the time. You may see the governor and the state senators and the state representatives. But not a lot of times do you ever see your local village board in action. And now with you sitting here, you can actually see them. So in the village of Sherman, there are, they're called trustees. And so they're elected at large by all of the citizens in the village of Sherman. They vote, they run, they stand for election every four years, just like myself. And like I said, they're referred to as trustees. They actually set policy. We can't do anything in the village of Sherman without the village, without the village board of trustees actually passing a budget, hiring police officers, providing for new police vehicles, providing for new snowplows, all of that stuff. So trustee Hahn, trustee Schultz, trustee Gray, trustee Long, trustee Tim, and trustee Rockford, they all vote, they all pass the budget. They all make these things possible for our town and our town function. And then the mayor, but I'm also referred to as the village president. The position that I hold, it's actually called the village president, but it can also be referred to as mayor. And in Illinois law, it's also referred to as mayor, so that they don't write president and mayor all of the time in the statute, in the laws. So if you hear this position that I am, you know, lucky to hold, referred to as mayor, it means the same thing, but technically it's called village president. And so when you heard, uh, I think it was the engineer say, Mr. President or village president, that's, that's why you hear mayor and president used interchangeably, meaning the same thing. So, does that make sense? Everybody? Okay.
Glazed eyes, I'm sure.
So anyway, what I wanted to tell you real fast though is, is there's six members of the village board. There's three sitting there, three sitting there that are actual trustees. The other individuals that are up here, the village engineer. So in order to run a town, it takes an engineer. And Kevin Kuhn, he works for his own private engineering firm, but is hired by the village of Sherman to do all of our studies on roads, whether a bridge can structurally hold something, or the amphitheater. So that had to be designed, and we had to know how much weight it could hold and various different things like that. So the engineers and the architects worked very closely together to figure out how we could design this amphitheater. That was an idea that we had and put it on paper and then put it into, you know, make it come to fruition. So that's who Kevin is. He's our village engineer. So now on the agenda, I'm going to the legal report. So in order to run a village or a town, you also have to have an attorney, a lawyer. And so we have Don Craven, who serves in that capacity. So I'm going to ask him if there's anything under legal, because we always get a report under, from the, from the legal counsel, whether there's something taking place that the village board needs to know about. So, Councilor Craven, anything to report?
No news is good news.
No news is good news. And then, we're going to move on on the agenda. And just so everybody knows, we post these agendas. This is so that everybody in town knows exactly what action and what business is business we're going to perform at our meeting. So we have to post these 48 hours in advance of the meeting, and that lets you know what's going to be on the agenda. Are they voting for a new playground? Are they voting for a new splash pad? Are they voting for a bike trail? Anything along those lines. And so we follow this agenda, and it has various different items on it. And that's what I, as mayor, when I conduct and run these meetings, I follow along in here. Which the next item that it brings us to is the village administrator and the economic development coordinator, and that's Mike Stratton, who sits in this position. So I'm going to ask him if there's anything to report under this topic.
A couple of different things. One mentioned earlier about the splash pad. In Sherman Village Park, where the playground is located in Illinois, obviously the board approved last year the construction of a spray ground. It's above the ground components, very similar to like Knights Action Park, where you would go out and you enjoy the different various water features that would spray water at you and everything else. The design is complete. It's before the Illinois Department of Public Health. There are the permitting, licensing agency. They are very slow, and they're showing that they're slowing in. We've had it before then for two months. We've tried to get in contact, speed it along. It does hold it up, because we can't go to bid until they approve the, approve those plans. Again, the design is complete. We've got the components, I think, and the colors all selected for this. It's really going to be quite a, quite an addition to the park. It really will keep, increase the traffic for the area as well. Which again, all the path things and non-motorized coming to the park, the traffic thing that Kevin's working on, and the potential paths that's going around the road, to have all areas access the park without, without, without the need of being competing with the traffic or playing frogger with the traffic on Business 55, which is considerably dangerous, is something that I think we definitely need to be focusing a lot of our attention. The only other thing I want to mention is, is that next week, I will be out of the office. My wife and I decided to go to Mexico. We may not be back, just watch it. It's 88 degrees there right now, sunshine every day. But the office will still make, open. Mike Mose, who's eager, huh? Mike, yeah, Mike Mose will be coming into the office. He'll be working on her new schedule, so we can cover phone calls and issues that may arise. So the office will be manned. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay. That's going to move us along. And just so that you also know, Sean Bull, he serves as the village clerk. So he, it's his, it's his duty to record the minutes, record all of the votes. A whole bunch of responsibilities go along with being the village clerk. And so if you don't have certification from the village clerk and a sign-off on any laws that we pass here, then it's essentially going to be null and void. So he is, in that office, is there to certify various different results of what actions the village board takes, and a whole bunch of other things. So that's, that's Clerk Sean Bull. Okay, so now it brings us to the president's report, or the mayor's report. And we have two items listed under my report. The first item that I'll read into the record is the WHS Music Scholarship Annual Request. So we've typically done this every year for the last, I don't, I can't think of how many years it's been going on, but, uh, there's a request of $500. A total request of $500, and $250 will be shared between the two villages. So the village of Williamsville will put up $250, and the village of Williamsville will put up $250 for a total amount from the two towns, which we share a school district, right? Go to high school in Williamsville, and you go to elementary school down here. So anyway, we're, we try to partner on most everything that we can and show solidarity between our two towns. So you would need a motion, an amount of $250 to support the WHS Music Scholarship Program. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Hahn makes a motion, seconded by trustee Long?
Yes.
Uh, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The measure is approved. Item number two, I'm going to read into the record, and ordinance regarding a variance. Okay, so ordinance number 21-09, and ordinance authorizing a variance from the side yard setback requirements for the property parcel. 06-25.0-353-030, located in Sherman, Illinois. The zoning board of appeals met last evening. Is Chairman Bull here?
No.
Okay, so who's going to report?
Back in.
Okay, so zoning board of appeals met last evening, had form, obviously. Their recommendation is to move forward, correct?
Yes, they do recommend you'd absolutely to approve the petition as request.
Okay, so let's, uh... Were you in attendance?
I wasn't, but I reviewed it.
Okay, so engineering reviewed and recommends?
We had no reason not to approve it.
Okay, so unanimously, the village, the village zoning board of appeals has recommended adoption of set of ordinance. Is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions? Nothing? Okay, comfortable, everybody? Okay, so we need a motion to approve ordinance number 21-09. Is there a motion to that effect? The one that I just read into the, into the record. Motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz will make a motion, seconded by trustee Tim. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That's six members voting yes, none voting no. Ordinance number 21-09 is adopted. That concludes the items underneath the president's report. Brings us to committee and department reports. Did anybody think of anything while we were conducting business to report on regarding your committee assignments? Nothing? Okay, so that brings us to the Sherman Police Department. I told Officer Infringer, Deputy Chief Infringer, to get out of the evening off, and I do not see him here, so, right? No? Sherman Emergency Management Agency Director Mike Mose, bring us up to speed on emergency management matters.
Briefly, I'd provide you some information for the benefit of the scouts, as we've been so kind to explain to you a little bit.
Yeah.
My role in emergency management is I manage the small group of people that we have that's volunteers to help the village and their disaster preparedness, including residents or places. I'm going to mention about the villas. We're working with the villas and their disaster plan. We run the siren system with the police department, and we do check training, and we're available as a means to assist the community.
What do you mean by siren system?
What I mean by a siren system is we have four sirens in the village strategically located. They're the ones on a pole that have a big horn on it. And on the first Tuesday of every month at 10:00, they go out real loud for around three minutes. And they're meant to be outdoor warning sirens to provide you warning that something's about to happen that is imminent and important for you to be aware of and to go and take shelter, and if you have time, get informed of what you're about to, what the warning is all about. Most of the time it's for severe storms, tornadoes. We have specific policies of how we approach that. We have an emergency operations center with radar and communications tools with the National Weather Service, where we can actually instantly see what is going on and make decisions with the mayor and the village administrator in regards to things that need to be done with the sirens. That's automatic. If I see there's something of danger and it's a warning, we're going to activate them. And that's us. What we try to advertise and the information's on our website is, like I said, those are outdoor warning sirens. How do you get notified if you're indoors? Anybody have an idea? Yes, sir.
Maybe if you get a notification on your phone?
Excellent, yes. A lot of times you can get it on your phone.
Or being called.
Called, on some systems they do that. Our system doesn't specifically call you unless you sign up for the county system. Yes, sir.
Uh, on the radio?
On the radio, that's another good way of doing it. The best way is to have a weather radio that's specifically tuned to the weather service, and they'll put out a warning anytime there's something going on. So that's the best way of doing it. And they're, they're not very expensive. They're only like $30, so it's well worth the investment.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll just go briefly over my editor report. I mentioned the villas are continuing some discussions. They've been very proactive in refining the disaster plan at Village East. And we're trying to refine it and make it easier to use and making sure not only it's a usable document, not to say it isn't now, but make it even more efficient and to make sure it complies with the states and federal regulations that they're required to meet. That part of the reason why we're able, we're talking to them quite a bit is they have been reaching out to us to cause of these requirements, because they're required to have a review by emergency manager if there's one in their area. One of the things that we just did recently, you know, we have a lot of new police officers, and they haven't really been introduced to emergency management yet in some of the roles they, that we provide. So we had a combined training meeting at one of their last indoor meetings that Chief Anger and Deputy Chief Anger put on. And not only did they review their Narcom policies and other policies, but we went over emergency management and how to run the siren system in case one of the volunteers isn't able to assist. Our people have gone through the National Weather Service for fresher training. I try to get them to do that on a annual basis. It's now being offered. We used to do it like we did at the AC Club, where we had a big session that was open to the public, had over 100 people there. They don't provide anymore in person, so it's done remotely. And quite frankly, we were rather surprised how good the course is. It's basically a two-hour course and was, I think, well received. And the last thing is, we're still continuing with our plan to put together a kit for forward command posts. Chief Anger had purchased before, um... Chief Banger had purchased before some portable shelters, pop-up tents, but these ones are rather large, in the sense that they're approximately 15 feet wide by, I believe, 30 feet long, have walls and a roof. They were the ones that we used during the flu clinic, when we had to drive up to the flu clinic. So our idea is, if we had a large situation, and we were operational, had to be operational in the field, that we have the capabilities, and that capability means we have to have power, extension cords, tables, chairs, things like that. So we're in the process of acquiring some of that equipment to make sure that we're able to do so. It's turning out to be pretty cost effective. It's not a big expensive project. We already have most of the parks, and we're working with the fire district, because they're in fact a partner on that too, as a combined effort, because they would be part of that command post operation. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's going to bring us to Sherman Public Works. Mr. Newton, Director Newton, he has the evening off. Mr. Bailey, have anything under public works?
No, we're all good. Just trying to beat the weather.
Sounds good, because we're doing a good job staying on top of that. New business. Actually, let me, I'll read my notes here real quick. Okay, I'll announce that later. So is there any new business coming forward? There isn't? There's no new business, which brings us to civic organizations. And actually, we listed the Libelos One Den Pack 330. I don't know if, is it Den Master? What do we call you? Den Master?
Den Leader.
Den Leader, that's right. It's been a while, I was in that.
Yeah, there you go.
Been a, been a long time. Anything that you, you have to say to the board?
No, I just, I just want to thank everybody, Mayor Flotfelter and the rest of the village board for hosting our group of scouts. I don't know, if you're not familiar with scout, basically what they do is, they go through various years of den levels and meeting requirements with the ultimate goal of crossing over to Boy Scouts. So one of the requirements that we're working through this year was meeting with our local elected officials. And I reached out to Mayor Flotfelter, asked him to come to our den meeting, and he graciously, you know, countered with the idea of coming to a village board meeting, which I think really kind of, I think, hopefully these guys are getting a real clear vision of what it takes to run a village. It takes the village to run a village. So, you know, a lot of things, exciting things happening, so I think these guys are, hopefully we'll be able to take back, you know, some knowledge, you know, of how things are ran, you know, to make this place a better place to live. So like I said, I appreciate you guys hosting us, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I mean, we're, we're very, we're so happy to see you guys here. And I, a quick story. There was a young man that came to one of these meetings a long time ago with trustee Tim's son, and he actually, something happened at that meeting that evening where we kind of, he interacted with the board, and I don't know how, well, how, how old is Taylor?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so he's 24, but he came to the meeting, I don't know, 14, 13, 10? What was he? Somewhere around that age group. And my wife, he was actually in, working at a restaurant type place, and he served my wife and her friends, and said, hey, oh yeah, I know who your husband is, and stuff like that. So I ultimately met him, and he brought up the, the fact that he remembered coming to a village board meeting from 10 plus years ago, and it actually drove him into wanting to get into urban planning, and running villages, and running towns, and things along those lines. So he actually went to college for that subject matter. And one of the things he pointed to, and reminded me, which I didn't even remember when, from that meeting, which was pretty cool for us to know that like, this, when we interact with the young people, that they go on in the future to potentially become the new leaders that are going to take over and run villages. So he's now, he, and then that actually transcended into us hiring him, and he worked for the village for the last year, assisting the village administrator, getting more experience. And then just was, most recently, now he just, he just resigned from us, because he got offered another job to work for downtown Springfield. So it can start at a meeting like this, just so you know. I mean, and it's, and it's fulfilling for us to know that we're bringing in new leaders. So when we get older, that you guys are taking the helm, and transcending villages, towns, cities, states, and our country on the right path. So it's, it's good and refreshing to see all of you here.
We have a question.
Yes.
Do you guys earn a badge for being mayor?
Yeah, this is one part of the requirement for our Building a Better World, you know, requirement. So yeah, we would earn, not necessarily a badge per se, but maybe a belt loop or something like that.
All right, any other questions? So that brings us to the public comment period. And we have two individuals who have signed in and requested to speak to the village board. So state law says that during, at a municipal meeting, that the, the town leaders, the representatives, has to reserve time for any citizen to come forward, and they are afforded a certain reasonable amount of time to address the village board. And so anybody can sign in and talk to the village board, and tell us whatever you think is good, bad, and different. If you want more playground equipment, you could come and talk to your village board representatives, and you don't just have to do it through email, or phone calls, or meeting with them in person, or catching them at the grocery store. You can actually come to a village board meeting, sign in on the sign in sheet, and then we will bring you forward, and allow you three minutes to talk to the board, and tell us whatever it is. Maybe you see a pothole, maybe your road needs fixed, maybe you just think everybody's doing a great job, and you want to say, hey, thank you for, you know, what you've done.
I'm sitting in the chair.
So anyway, during the public comment period, and that's on the agenda as well, individuals can come forward and address the village board. The first person who signed in is actually our clerk. Did you mean to sign in?
I think Mike signed me in, but I'll.
So, but as for the Sherman Chamber. So Sean Bull, our clerk, also is a member of the Sherman Chamber of Commerce, and he's, you're part of the board, he can, I'll, go ahead and speak.
We've got our golf, the Sherman Area Chamber of Commerce, we've got our golf outing coming up, May 13th. We're looking for a couple more teams. It'll be a foursome. I fear there's, there's eight of you here. Two teams. But it's a good time, it's over here at the rail. You know anybody who wants to go over to the family? I don't know about that. I will have a team already.
Sponsored by Kool and Trolle.
So please help support the, the organization. It's our only fundraiser. We have not had a fundraiser in the last, I think, two or three years, so we are looking to, to raise funds. And then I think, probably should, we've got cleanup day coming up.
Yeah, I got that.
All right.
All right. Yep, absolutely. Next individual, Mrs. Sandra Walden, if you could come forward.
I just wanted to ask about the treasurer's report, because it's been a year now since you've had a monthly one, and you hired the other gal a couple, two or three months ago to do this, and.
Yeah, they're, they're wrapping it up, literally, and they've been working with Sickich, the auditors. So the audit's being, getting finalized, the treasurer's reports, everything. So, look at my notes here. What's this? So next, next month, the treasurer's report should be, we should be running through pretty much everything to reconcile all of that.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Walden. Okay, so that's, that's it for the individuals who have signed in to speak. Now I just want to make a few announcements before we get out of here. Announcements, garage sales are this weekend, April 23rd and 24th. That's going to lead us into cleanup day, which is on the following weekend, May 1st, right? The following weekend, May 1st, is cleanup day, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Waldrop Park. Whatever you don't sell, I'm going to throw away, you'll be able to do that, and we're bringing back cleanup day. It's been on hiatus due to COVID, but not this year. So we're taking, we're taking, we're bringing that back. Next announcement will be the W H S jazz concert is going to be Saturday at 6:00 p.m. at Sherman Village Park Amphitheater. We have the girls softball tournament on Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Waldrop Park. I want to let everybody know, if you didn't hear the news, I mean, the radio interview that I did on Monday.
You want us to play it for you?
No, I do not. So we're, so we're, our newsletter writer, we're going to start bringing back the quarterly newsletter. We kind of got away from that. COVID, various other reasons, it was a monthly newsletter, it became too cumbersome to do it monthly, so we're going to do it quarterly, four times a year. It'll be thicker, and it's going to showcase a lot of the projects that we discussed here, much like we did years ago when we put that, that document, that newsletter out. It's going to be a glossy, eight page, folded, 16 pages of information to disseminate, to keep our citizens well informed of what's going on. You'll be able to see what the, you know, the pictures of the splash pad look like, where it's going to be situated next to the playground system. You'll see highlights of various different events, concerts and things that are taking place around town, the bike trail status, just things along those lines. So the newsletter is coming back, so that we can, not everybody has Facebook, not everybody goes to our website. It's very nice to have a document that arrives in your mailbox, so that you can look over and get, you know, communications from your village leaders on. So we're bringing that back. Number five on my, I don't know, yeah. Number five, Green Dodge Kia. So for the families and youngsters, if you ever attended any of our movies in the park, the concert series, the movie series is coming back. We're going to have four different family kids movies showing again this year, thanks to our sponsors at Green Dodge Kia, the Green Family Stores. We're going to bring back the ice cream socials that used to take place on Sundays, right? You're towards anybody, but somewhat was a popular hit with the older citizens, what Villas, some of the individuals that live in the Villas areas would come down. The concert series is coming back. We've already got a couple concerts that are booked, we've had them booked. July 10th will be the Van Halen, 84th Tribute to Van Halen. Those guys that come up from down by Atlanta, Georgia, and have been a mainstay and staple in our concert series, a lot of fun, a good draw. They'll be here July 10th to rock, rock out with, with everybody. Then on, what's the other one?
July 30th.
July 30th, the Def Leppard tribute, so.
We're still trying to track down resurrection journey.
Yeah, so last year, guys, we had like 19 different concerts all lined up, and a lot of different fun events, from circuses to outdoor live music, to car shows, ice cream socials, movies in the park. And then the pandemic, and the requirements, and the rules for not having gatherings, made us have to scratch that, scratch all those events. So we're going to bring back some of them this year, as best we can, and have a lot of fun in that park that was really taking off over the last several years since we opened it up. This is a new announcement, we just started working on this. May 22nd, May 22nd, we'd love to see you guys out there too. We're going to do a law enforcement appreciation day at the park. We're not looking through the details on that, but saying thanks to our local police officers, county officers, state troopers, city, whatever city they're from. So we're going to have a nice appreciation for law enforcement on May 22nd at Village Park. We're going to open up the concession stand, that's a new announcement. We haven't done that. It'll be a nice revenue stream. There's a lot of individuals that attend the playground, and families, and you can't go to the gym, or Hope Church, where we play flag football, without them having a concession stand and getting hit for a dollar ring pop, so we're going to open up the concession stand and sell drinks, candy bars, and various things along those lines, to the, to the families that are attending the playground and the park.
What's the playground dedication song? We don't play for the playground.
All right, so is there any other announcements? Can anybody think of anything? This is a long meeting for us, typically we're done in about 25 to 35 minutes, so. You see, the members are looking at me right now. Shut up, retire here in your car.
Don't be anything. No, I'm not.
Okay, Eric, I got a question for you guys.
We have, we have so a spun top, that's all it was like.
Right? So did you guys just have a, like a pinewood derby competition? Who won, who was, who won that? Who had the fastest car?
Mr. Chase Winkler, right here.
Chase Winkler? Chase Winkler, come up here, you're going to be, you're going to be the mayor right now. All the way up here. Right here, buddy.
Say you said the hammer first.
All right, you're going to end this meeting with us. You're going to hit this, this is the gag. Can use it on trustees sometimes, or the administrator, or the attorney, but right now we're just going to use it to close the meeting. Here's what I want you to say, in order to close this meeting, can you read my writing?
If there is no further business to come before the village board, the chair will entertain.
Entertain.
To.
To. Okay, is there, say this, is there a motion to that?
Is there a motion to that?
Say, trustee Schultz.
Trustee Schultz.
Makes a motion. You gotta say it loud, you're little. Trustee Schultz makes a motion, say it.
Trustee Schultz makes a motion.
All right, seconded by?
Seconded by.
Say it.
Seconded by.
Trustee Gray.
Seconded by.
Ladies and gentlemen, tell them we're adjourned.